I'd like to call the Delaware County Commissioners Meeting in order. It's Monday, June 18, 2018. The time is 9:03. Ralph, could you lead us into the election?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Steve, can you call, please?
Mr. Henry.
Here.
Ms. Reagan.
Present.
Mr. King.
Here.
Mr. Brooke.
Here.
Move down the table, business. Have you heard back from the sheriff on any of that yet, John?
I have still some questions pending with the sheriff. What I sent to you last night, I finally got from the state, the contract for your review. The way this works is if an inmate is sent to the hospital overnight, and it only requires overnight, not a emergency room or any other treatment, the inmate is sent overnight, then the county is required to get them signed up for Medicaid, which they're already doing a lot of that, open door, open that, so open door would be the natural assistance for this. If an inmate is overnight, then the hospital has to bill the Medicaid rate for the overnight stay. The state will pay the federal part of the Medicaid rate, and then we have to reimburse the state for the state's portion. Right now, I've been trying to find out from the sheriff exactly what rate they're being charged by the hospital for overnight stays. They don't get a lot, but they're still, I'm still working through some invoices and stuff, but that's at least guarantees that it would be the overnight or the Medicaid rate.
Okay.
Take a closer look.
Yes, so take a look at the contract they sent to you last night. I apologize. Sent to you last night.
Okay. Go ahead and leave that table. We'll move on to the application for county edit grant funds for the Delaware County Historical Society.
I'd like to move that we take this off the table.
I'll second it.
I have a motion of second to remove it from the table. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Williams, yeah, Mr. Williams.
Morning.
Morning. Would anyone like to make a motion to go ahead and approve this application for the grant funds, since we removed it from the table?
Forty-seven hundred dollars. Yeah, on the move that we remove the grant. Oh, wow, we, forty-seven hundred dollars.
Make a motion to approve the grant application for that grant funds?
I'll second it.
I have a motion of second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
That's forty-seven hundred dollars, sir.
Appreciate that so much. And stop by, we're, first phase is finished, so if you want to stop by and check it out, please do.
Bless knowing you're having ice cream and cake or something.
I will do that.
Fundraising. But, they're Thursday night. Yeah, Thursday night, he's having his annual meeting.
We're having an annual meeting.
Appreciate all the work, Jim, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Actually, we need approval for June 4th, 2018 minutes.
Second.
Motion of second for approval of minutes. Steve, can you call the roll?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Actually, we'll move to presentations for the commissioners of the Eagle's Lodge. Recognition for donations, Mr. Jones?
Yes. Nate Jones, Delaware County Veterans Affairs. The reason I'm actually here today is we had the opportunity, we were approached by some people that were affiliated with the Eagle's Lodge here in Muncie, and they wanted to put on a show and raise some money for veterans and donate money to our donation account. To be honest with you, it was kind of touching because I didn't realize how big this was going to be. And so actually, before I get started, will you guys come on up?
I need everyone to sign in.
Okay.
I just love the look on people's face when you say, "Come on up."
Hey, they deserve it.
We know that one behind, yeah, Carol.
Up right here.
This one, right here?
Yes.
Or you want us?
Just, just right here.
Oh, you're perfect.
They're not going to be speaking or anything.
Are you sure?
Yeah, well, they may.
You never know.
That's right. So what we wanted to do is explain kind of what happened. They, they put on a show, it's a, what'd you guys call it, lip singing? Lip singing show, and a few of us come from our office, me and Ralph and Dwight, a few others had come and stopped by, and actually, there were some veterans that we serviced within our office as well that were there. We assumed, and I think he surprised me, he surprised me with this one, didn't he? We, you know, he said, "Nate, we're going to do this, we're going to try to raise a little bit of money, maybe try to ask for five hundred dollars for you." I thought, "Okay, that's great, that's huge," you know, so we decided to go do whatever. They ended up raising a bunch of cash, but in addition to that, they voted on, from their board, to approve a five thousand dollar check to Delaware County Veterans Affairs. And to me, I just think that's huge. That's going to change lives and it's going to save lives in this county with veterans. And so I just think it's important that we recognize the people that are supporting our veterans here locally, and so we would like to, from the Delaware County Commissioners and our office, present you guys and your organization this certificate, which reads, "Present this certificate of appreciation to Eagle's Lodge F.O.E. number 231 for outstanding community leadership and for generous donation to the Delaware County Veterans Affairs Office. Signed, all three commissioners." Thank you from the bottom of our hearts for all you guys have done for us. Thank you very much. If you all would like to say anything, you're more than welcome. Would either, any of you like to say anything? Yes, okay.
My husband and I do the Purple People Leader, and I think we shocked Nathan. And Ms. Carol here, she did Tina Turner, and I think that even shocked me the most.
Got me a little red in my pants.
We love what we do, and we raise money for charities, and we chose this one because it's important to us.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And I will say that she, she presented me and Ralph with a picture of us receiving that, because I'll be honest with you, it hit me hard enough that it about brought tears to my eyes.
Yeah.
I was not anticipating a five thousand dollar check. I was anticipating a couple hundred dollars, great, that can help us, that was great to us, but for that to be that, that big of a number was just huge. So I just thank you guys for giving us this picture. This is going to stay in my office until the end of time. So the other couple things I do want to mention, tomorrow, we are doing a partner with Culvers in trying to raise some additional funds for Delaware County Veterans Affairs. It's tomorrow night, can you hear?
No, I'll just get the flash.
Tomorrow night from 5:00 until 8:00 P.M., you come out there, you participate, eat, do whatever, and a portion of those proceeds go to our donation account. I do want to say, of that money that was donated, we've already helped one veteran family from actually becoming homeless, because the actual veteran passed away, and then the son passed away three days later. Turned around, they were in the process of, they didn't know whether to pay for a funeral or to have a home. They chose to pay to have their relative buried, so we chose to help with their rent, okay? So just, just so that you guys know what that went towards. Thank you.
Nate, I would like, I do appreciate, but I do want to ask, how can the people that need this make out an application? What's the accountability that, do they first need to get turned down, maybe from the trustee?
Well, this is what happens. We, we go through the VA system. We don't necessarily, we, we allow them to try any other option possible.
Right.
But our donation account is a, is the last ditch effort. So you go through the VA, VA doesn't give you anything, you go through the state, the state doesn't give you anything. If we cannot find any help without, you know, throughout the community, then we go to our donation fund. And, and for this last situation, for example, the VA had denied her of some things because of a wrongdoing on an application. Then it moved forward, they only gave her about half of what they anticipated giving her, so therefore, she was short a substantial amount. And so we basically get everything else out of the way, and then we come to us, very last thing. It's an application process, you come to our office, pick up an application, fill it out, then we talk amongst it, amongst our people, determine whether or not we want to move forward with that, and then if we approve it, then we come to y'all and ask for approval from all three of you, just so there's a checks and balances there.
I appreciate that. Great, thank you so much.
Thank you, good job, you guys, good job.
I just want to say the Eagle's Lodge is a great organization. They also helped the Delaware County Sheriff's Department purchase a canine and also a vehicle. So it's organizations like you guys in our community that helps out tremendously. I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you.
And I'd like to add that Carol Fisher, sitting there on the end, she used to work in the planning commission with, for Martha, for how many years, Carol?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine. She was a very, very, one of the best bookkeepers around, and I appreciated working with her. Good to see you today.
May I say something?
Sure.
We, we donated to Mayor twenty thousand dollars through Better Way. They, the government.
Sure.
Governor Swisher, the funds, let Better Way out, so. He said he needed fifty thousand, he already raised thirty.
Wow.
I went to Florida, I got him twenty thousand dollars.
Wow.
Better Way.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good job, very much.
We're pretty good at helping people, but we can't.
That's right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next, we have the United Way, Casey Stanley.
I have one question, just to get started. You're not going to turn the camera on my, okay, I want to go over there and then. Nobody needs me that close. Nor did I know I was going to have to follow such a tough act.
Yeah.
That was great. So again, I'm Casey Stanley. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present and speak to you today. I am a volunteer, here really on behalf of the United Way. I work here in town, Ontario Systems, Muncie, Delaware County native. Also here, Jenny Marsh and Denise King, United Way CEO and Director of Resource Development. I just wanted to recognize them. I'm here really just to share a very quick story, and at the end, obviously, make an ask the commissioners. So the, the story really, the background or the context I'd like to share in just a couple of minutes is, and also my connection to this is, last year, I was part of the team that was part of the overall United Way campaigning Delaware County. So to the extent you recognize my voice from the radio, I apologize. So, you know, at the end of the day, not to belabor this and tell you something that you already know, but, you know, the county and the city, there are some, some families really struggling. We know this. The statistics, in my experience of digging in last year, the statistics are overwhelming. I mean, just in round numbers, we know that about a quarter of the county lives below the poverty line. We know that about another quarter of the county lives in a group that United Way identifies as ALIS, which is asset limited, income constrained but employed, the working poor. Working one, two jobs, you know, full-time equivalent job, struggling to make much money, so they exist right, right there at that line, and they are one unplanned event, they're one, one illness, one, somebody hit their car, away from falling into that poverty group. And what we also know is that it's a national problem. It is, it is a root cause challenge for families. If you think about the impact over generations, to not be able to break that cycle, but repeat that cycle, think of the impact to those families, our schools, our county, again, substantial. So as I learned more about that, it met so many of these families, what I also learned in my time with United Way is that there, there is actually a solution. There is a reason to be hopeful, and that reason is, and that's why United Way now, a little bit differently than as I was growing up, United Way really focuses on that solution. The solution is, it's well researched, it's well documented, the solution is early childhood education. We know, the research says, the experts say, that we know that education, especially starting with the children, is the way in the long run that you can change, not only that family's life, but really the life of this, this place. So that's what inspired me and got me excited about being part of that, because I thought, you know what, not only can we help people today, but maybe we can do it in a way that changes this place in the long run. So that is, the solution is, is early childhood education. But if you back up, what we said is, nearly half of this county lives below the poverty line, or right there at that. So we said, education is the solution, but again, statistically, what we know is that children from lower income homes, as an example, are exposed to about 25 hours of picture book and reading time with their parents before they get to elementary school. Twenty-five hours. Middle-class families are exposed to somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,500 hours. We know that when a child, a child from a lower income family gets to school, they've been on average exposed to 3 million less words. 3 million less words than a middle-class family. So as you can tell, and one other, children that live below poverty are 13 times more likely to drop out of high school. So what we know, again, is this cycle repeats itself, and we know those families in particular that are trying to put food on the table, trying to work, trying to take care of their kids, struggle to find the time and the resources and the plan to do that. So what United Way is doing now, and what we're here to ask you about is, United Way has a single goal, a single focus, one metric, and that's third grade reading. We know that third grade reading is the single best predictor of a child's future. Full stop. So just focusing on that particular, but that is a fork in the road in their life. Again, if they're reading at grade level, the statistics and the odds of them succeeding are so much higher than if they don't. And at that fork in the road, if they fall below that grade reading level, we also know while it doesn't seal their fate, it does set them up for a much different and much more challenging future. So United Way's goal is that all kids in this county are reading at grade level in third grade by 2024. They're on their way, it will not be easy, but they are transparent, they're accountable. The funding for the campaign this year supports, you know, more than 25 programs and organizations who report those findings and those results back through United Way. It's reputable, it's proven, they started this several years ago, and put reading clubs and other programs in schools in the city and county. They're working in a variety of programs, the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, which is serving 1,000 kids in this county and across the county. What we see is that this local United Way, our United Way, your United Way, was recognized a couple of years ago as one of the top 15 United Ways in the country for doing this work in education. Obviously, when they started that, they didn't foresee Wall State taking a leadership role and trying to help with the city schools and be more involved in education all around this county. So their mission is well aligned with that effort and those resources that you, you are hearing about. The reason I'm here today is to ask you, on behalf of the campaign this year, the county employees, I think, used to be connected to and engaged with, and United Way was able to come in and speak with those different groups, not, not to pressure them, but to give them this important information. This is the single largest fundraising campaign in this county every single year. Last year, the campaign was up nearly 20 percent, not really because of the work of that campaign team, but because of the message, because of the hope, because of the information that we were able to put in front of more and more people in this county. So the request we have, of course, is to provide any information, I have packets of information in more detail, and we can do that, we're happy to do that at any time, but we wanted to come to the three of you and seek your approval and permission to engage with the county employees in, in the same way we have with the city employees over the years, as well as so many other employers in this county. Workplace campaigns are the single best and most effective way we have to generate resources for the kids and the families in this county. So thank you for, for the time, I'd be happy to ask any questions. I guess the action item, I suppose, is some kind of endorsement or some kind of approval, and then we can begin communicating with you and with other groups in the county about how, how we might do that.
Well, thank you, Mr. Stanley. I would like to recommend that he stop down at HR and do a.
Get with Rick.
Get with Rick, and then have Rick bring it back to us, what's doable, because we can do direct deposit, I believe. And I know a lot of times when they would take the film out, they sometimes have them nuts, and maybe we could push that. Not to miss it, we should have healthy food, actually. So bananas and oranges or something, but, you know, thanks so much, and.
I agree. You've met our HR director, Rick Spender?
I have.
He's right there.
Now I have.
If you could just meet with him, either today or sometime this week, and you guys can get together and.
When is the kickoff? Because you're having a big kickoff, like a day of work?
We're going to do that again this year. The official kickoff is Friday, September 14th. That's also the day of action, so obviously, unashamedly, I am here about money, because that's, that's part of the deal. But at the same time, as an example, that day on the 14th is the United Way's Day of Action, so it's a county-wide, again, effort. The last year went from about 150 or so participants to nearly 500. So we're hoping to grow that again, so that's another, another opportunity we can put in front of people who might, might say, "Hey, I can't give this year, I can't give much, but I can give a little of my time." So there's some other ways we can engage too.
Yeah, very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
No, thank you very much, and the good thing is, we have a model for how we've done this with so many other organizations, and I'm confident we can find a way that works for you, but yeah, maybe, you know, help the, help the families. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it. Next, we'll go to contracts and agreements for approval. We have the BI contract. John, I think this is something we just do.
This is a standard annual contract with, for the Community Corrections. I saw Mitch earlier, but.
He's right here. There he is. Morning.
Morning.
Matt Castle, I'm the Director of Delaware County Community Corrections. Got a couple issues, we need to renew the BI contract, which has been amended to show Smartlink. And then the other contract is the Commissioner of Delaware Lee's program contract to also include the new Smartlink program. Smartlink, we were on a trial period, so we now need to make it.
So you've been pleased with the trial?
Yeah, I think we've got about 10 or 11 people on it right now, and I think it could be a program that will help ease the jail population a little bit more on some of the Level 6, the ones that don't really need house arrest, so. I'd entertain a motion if we could, just to go ahead and approve both contracts.
John, you've lifted them both?
Yes.
They seem acceptable. I make a motion, we approve both contracts.
Second.
I have a motion of second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
James, I'm going to get with you after the meeting, if you've got some time, try to get that contract done. So we can. I tried it last week, Jenny tried it last week, and it kept popping everything back through us.
Right, I've got the IT people are going to come up downstairs, and then I've got Don Gossett standing.
Okay.
Waiting for us.
Okay, no problem.
See if we can get it done, get that headache over.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Next, we have the bid award for Bridge 701. Angie?
Morning Commissioners. I recommend that we award to the low bidder, shut, look-a-bill company for 379,280 and 13 cents.
I'm going to make a motion, we accept that, I'm not going to say the company's name. I make a motion, we accept that contract.
I'll second that.
I have a motion of second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Next, we have the Wheeling Safety Improvements Amendment.
These were amendments to approve the Redevelopment Commission for Wheeling Avenue using some TIF money, because it affects the Morrison TIF, and the Redevelopment Commission, since Brad's not here, recommended that the Commissioners make this approval.
And did they, I suppose they recommended the preferred ones, number two preferred option?
We recommended.
On the Carrington?
For Wheeling Avenue at Moore Road, we're going with the traffic signal.
Yeah, that's number one.
So that's option number one.
Yeah.
And on Wheeling and Carrington Boulevard, we chose second option.
Right, for sure. Yeah, I'll move that we approve these as proposed.
I'll second.
I have a motion of second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Did they give, did they give a timeline when they might be able to start that and finish it?
Well, they were hoping to take care of both projects this year, but a little bit of a delay, so I'm hoping maybe the signal this fall, and then spring would be the Wheeling Avenue at Carrington Boulevard.
Yeah, very good. Thanks. And you worked with the city on that too, didn't you?
I reached out to do pain ball.
Thanks.
Next, we have the Edit Planner Vision.
Yes, based upon conversations with Commissioners, we want to make a revision to the Edit Plan to move 550,000 from project.
Fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine, I think.
To 37.
To 37, there you go, I couldn't, I might have to call it up here, so. So that the county can honor its YOC contract.
I'll make a motion to approve the revised economic development.
Second.
I have a motion of second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Next, we have contract for consulting services.
Yes, this is a contract for consultants to address the issues concerning, were raised about the movement of the jail and possibly the courts out of downtown to address some of the concerns and give additional, this is wall bash scientific, give information to Commissioners so that they can use that information to help understand and plan for this. So I've met with the consultant, I've had input on the scope of services to try to narrow the scope of services down, so that addresses the specific issues that the Commissioners want to have addressed and not get too far out, and I think that this is a good contract, and I recommend the Commissioners approve that.
I did get on that site, and I wasn't too impressed, actually, with his background or.
He's done, he has done a lot of work, he's worked on some of these projects, we talked about his work, he's done work in Delaware County in the past, many years ago, and he has worked with other community-based organizations to, we wanted something with a little, with, that was kind of an outsider rather than the usual consultants, so to get a different perspective.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract for consulting services.
I'll second.
I have a motion of second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
No.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Next, we have interlocal agreement with the Town of Albany.
This was also something discussed at the Redevelopment Commission meeting, this is for some ground that the county has out in, outside Albany, in some area that was to be developed. I think here's a fish farm that was, never has it been developed. This is a request by the Town of Albany entering into an interlocal agreement where the, right now it's being farmed, the cash rent would be maintained by the Town of Albany, I believe that's the way it works, and it's just a few acres, it's for the road primarily that's not there yet, so I don't think the county's really losing anything.
Yeah, well, I'll move that we approve this interlocal agreement.
I'll second it.
I have a motion of second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Next, we have an interlocal agreement between the Town of Yorktown and Delaware County for road maintenance and improvements.
This is an interlocal agreement that Commissioners passed last time. This is what happens when attorneys get involved in, in writing these agreements, changes are made, so I won't besmirch the entire practice, but, so if you could approve this, they're just a few minor amendments that did affect the substance of it.
So move.
Second.[1711.12] Second.
Have motion a second. Steve, can you call her, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
I have a question. Who's gonna give me the signature from Yorktown? And then also the, there's council names.
I will send it to Yorktown.
Okay.
The, Yorktown's procedure is that only the President signs.
Okay.
And so they will have to have a meeting sometime, I think it's next month, so I will ask that they send the final agreement to you, okay?
Do I have county council to sign it in our...
Once, once Yorktown signs it, then...
Okay.
Probably be July for...
Okay.
The county council.
Thank you. Next, we'll move the ordinances for first reading. We have ordinance number 2018-006, ordinance establishing Delaware County Sheriff's Indiana Department of Homeland Security grant account.
Hi, I'm Jeremy Marvin with the Delaware County Sheriff's Office. We're requesting that you guys approve the ordinance for the funding for the grant that we received for the purchase of three new AEDs.
John, you received this, didn't you?
Just in my packet.
Okay. I believe this is just opening up a line of...
Line and receipt.
That way they can receive the grant.
Is this all, it'd be expended in one year?
Yeah, it has to be expended within thirty days.
Okay, great. I think the, how I look at ordinances...
I'll make a motion, we introduce ordinance number 2018-006.
Second.
Have motion a second. Steve, can you call her, please?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Jeremy, when you getting the money, do you know?
July one.
This is the one they want to suspend maybe?
Yes, that probably would be appropriate.
Probably should, yeah. I'll make a motion, we suspend the rules.
Second.
Have motion a second to suspend the rules. Steve, can you call her, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
I'll make a motion, we adopt ordinance number 2018-006.
Second.
Have motion a second for adoption. Steve, can you call her, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
So it wasn't hard.
Oh, thanks, Commissioner.
They always get that.
They have you all nervous.
You were worried, yes.
(laughing). Yeah.
Nice job.
Actually, we have ordinance number 007, an ordinance of Delaware County, Indiana, grant account for the deposit of funds derived from the community crossing grant.
Yes, Commissioners, this is an ordinance request from the Highway Department. They are receiving community crossing grant funds of $662,880, which will be split between the highway and the bridge side. So there are actually two accounts that need to be set up, one for the highway side, one for the bridge. This year, they're gonna be using the local match from their MVH funds, and also fifty percent from the cumulative bridge fund. In the past, they used rainy day fund and cumulative bridge fund, but this year, they've got money in MVH and cumulative bridge to serve as the local match. So I would ask the Commissioners to introduce this and then suspend the rules to adopt, so they can get their grant money.
I'll make a motion, we introduce ordinance number 2018-007.
Second.
Have motion a second for introduction. Steve, can you call her, please?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
I'll make a motion, we suspend the rules.
Yeah, second.
Have a motion a second for suspension of the rules. Steve, can you call her, please?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
I'll make a motion, we adopt ordinance number 2018-007.
Second.
Have motion for adoption. A second. Steve, can you call her, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Now we'll move to resolutions for approval. We have resolution number 2018-020, approving the local... Resolution and amended redevelopment plan of the Delaware County Redevelopment Commission and approving order of the Delaware Muncie Metropolitan Planning Commission.
This is an ordinance for the modifying the TIF, I think it's the NIBO TIF, for the Redevelopment Commission. The process is, has to go to the Plan Commission. There were some changes the Plan Commission wanted last month, so those were made. Redevelopment Commission approved this, and is requesting that the Commissioners adopt this resolution so that the Plan Commission can go along with the changes.
Do you remember how many acres was involved? Or footage or anything, or even the location?
This is one we're working with Yorktown on to, to, right, out there by 500 West, yes, south of, in the Yorktown's area.
Okay.
The acreage was cut back per the Planning Commission's request. Yeah. I'll make a motion, we approve resolution number 2018-020.
Second.
Have motion a second. Steve, can you call her, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Next, we have resolution 2018-021, resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the County of Delaware, Indiana, identifying parcels to be offered for sale to adjacent property owners.
Good morning Commissioners.
Morning.
Janet Kessler, Tax Sale Deputy. Yes, this list of twenty-five properties have been in multiple tax sales, and we've already identified adjacent property owners that are qualified, so we will be working on this sometime in July for your approval.
When we say lots, are some of them with a house, or most of them?
No, none of them.
Have they gone down? They are just the lots, and...
Just lots, yes.
I move we adopt resolution 2018-021.
I'll second it.
Have motion a second. Steve, can you call her, please?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
Next, we have resolution number 2018-022, approving an interlocal agreement for the management of property in the Town of Albany, Indiana.
Just because the way your agenda works, the interlocal agreement's first, and then the resolution comes in, but the resolution just says that you approved the interlocal agreement, which you just did about three minutes ago, so...
That's government for you.
Have motion a second.
Yeah. I move we adopt resolution 2018-021.
I'll second it.
Have motion a second. Steve, can you call her, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Next, we'll move to Department Heads and Elected Officials. Joe Brumley, Department of Public Affairs.
Good morning. I've got maps. I'm sure, I'm thinking you're all familiar with the buildings.
I need a copy of it, too.
Yep. Good morning, everyone. Joel Brumley, Purdue Extension and Delaware County 4-H, seeking the Commissioners' approval to improve the exterior of Building 12 at the county fairgrounds. And this would simply be painting, assuming that you would be okay with us painting the building a neutral color, probably a white, similar to what it is now. The real question is, would you allow us to put the 4-H clover on the building?
Oh, yeah.
And I think maybe that's, that's some discussion about the location of the clover, the number of clovers that we might put on there, the size of the clover. There's nothing funny that would be done with a clover as far as, when you see a 4-H clover, it should be standard. That's owned by the United States Congress, and so it would be a white clover, it would be a green clover. It wouldn't look exactly the same as the rest, but it's really the location and the size of the clover that you might allow. There's no hurry for this decision.
But the fair is coming up pretty soon.
The fair's coming up. I have many, many, many other priorities ahead of this one, but I just wanted to get the permission. This is the building that we've been storing our items in for, I think, just the last few years. The paint's coming off of it.
How's the roof?
The roof is good because that was fixed a couple of years ago.
Was it? Okay.
You guys have, you guys have put some money into this yourselves, correct?
Yes, yes.
Labor. But it's gonna be the same color as the other buildings, except for the clover?
And I think it's a white, and it's right next to that, the far southeast corner building that's weighing some measures. That's a white building as well, so we would likely do a very similar white to what it is right now.
Not the red on the bottom? Is it a red or maroon you're using?
I don't know. There's kind of maroon trim and off-white at the top, but those over there, though, you could, they could paint those white, and it wouldn't hurt anything because they sit away from the others. I'd like to allow them to do it myself.
I don't mind that, I guess. Yeah, you, we know that you're not gonna go out and have to paint it, but we hope that you have it done soon. Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Do you want to have a motion and a second to vote on that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we allow 4-H to make some improvements to that building with paint and paint the clover on it.
Have motion a second. Steve, can you call her, please?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Good morning, Jason. Good morning Commissioners. Jason Robb, Delaware County Mercy Management. I just want to give you an update on the EGOV deals. The first round of auctions is complete. We're waiting to finish the process, which means that the checks will come, and then people will pick up the equipment. So we've had several successful auctions, a few situations where people had questions, and all of the EGOV processes that were in place that we trained on are working, so we, we're ready to proceed with other departments. So John, Coutinho, myself will be reaching out to the other department heads to get those, those done. I do have the next list of items. It's, there are seven ambulance cots, three of which are operational, four of which are parts, would be the next surplus. We just purchased the power cots for the ambulances that are in service, so we took three of them out of service, and these are the parts for the old cots that are basically taking up storage room, and we're gonna put those on, on the website next, if you see fit to deem them a surplus.
I'd like for you to give a success story on that one item that you...
So the ambulance that we auctioned off, which is State Certification 2205, that particular ambulance, we were offered $500 trade-in for it when we purchased our last ambulance, or we were offered, very typically it's about a $500 trade-in value for those trucks, and it sold at EGOV auction for $3,800, I believe, so...
Appreciate all your work on this.
Yeah, thanks, Jason. I've approved of the list. I'll make a motion, we approve his list of the seven cots and parts.
Second.
Have motion a second. Steve, can you call her, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
I've got meetings set with Charlie Walker and a few other department heads, so we should probably be getting, and I'll get them to you earlier than the day of the meeting for when the list for EGOV gets much more expanded. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next, we got the Redevelopment Commission for temporary easement, also property issued along that...
Yes. The Redevelopment Commission heard Brad Bookout give a report. There is a need for a temporary easement for Brad's self-storage, so that they could do some work out there as part of the economic development project. I have the original document here, and there's also some, a land swap. The Redevelopment Commission owns a triangle about .45 acres, which is a triangle on some property, and Brad's self-storage has a similar triangle on his property. It makes for uneven parcels, and so there would be a swap of these particular triangles, basically, to straighten out the parcel lines and make them an even square. It's a fair deal. It's, it's the same amount of property, .41 to .45 acres, and so I have the deeds that we prepared also to make that transfer. So you're approving a temporary access easement and a quitclaim deed for this particular project.
I make a motion, we approve both.
Second.
Have motion a second. Steve, can you call her, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
And Denise, I'll get the signatures, we'll give you a copy, send you a copy electronically, because I've gotta record both of these, okay?
Okay.
John, next, we've got the Regional Wastewater District, the appeal decision.
Right. I sent to all of you a draft decision that was put together in January 2016. Residents of Rorton, the Rorton area and DeSoto area made an application or petition because they objected to their rates for the Delaware County Regional Wastewater District. The Commissioners retained the services of an accounting firm, Crowe Horvath, to go through the books of the Redevelopment Commission. It took some time because the books were in less than perfect order, and there were a lot of questions, and I fielded a lot of information, and there was a bond from 2012 that the paperwork wasn't even done yet, from 2012, which is kind of ridiculous, but it didn't get done till like October, November, December of 2017, which is what was needed. The results I've shared with the Commissioners in previous meetings from the, for the auditors, it seemed that the people in Rorton were being subsidized by residents of Westbrook and Daleville fairly substantially, and that the cost for the Rorton and DeSoto people were the direct result of, I'm gonna call them astronomical charges, being charged by the Muncie Sanitary District. While the rates for Chesterfield would services Daleville, and the rates for Yorktown would service Westbrook, Muncie Sanitary District was charging three and 400 times that rate, and what these people are paying for is Muncie Sanitary District's work that's going on right now, even though they have nothing to do with it, and they're paying for every gallon of water, whether it's sewage water or inflow water. And that's something, an issue that the Regional Wastewater District is trying to address, because they're really being held hostage by the Muncie Sanitary District. The rates are unconscionable. So to that end, the information that came back from Crowe Horvath was that the rates in Rorton were probably okay, but there was a little bit of fat in them. The Regional Wastewater District has done this year, last year and this year, done a good job of reducing its overall costs because there was some real questionable spending that was going on. They reduced the cost by over $100,000 to $150,000, just in one year alone, which would allow the rates to be reduced for the Rorton and DeSoto people by $5 a month. It's not a great deal, but given what's being charged by the Sanitary District, this is a little bit of relief for those people, and it won't impact the bottom line of the Regional Wastewater District. So based upon your recommendation and request, primarily of Commissioner Henry, I prepared a findings and conclusion for the Commissioners to grant and deny the appeal. In, on the statute, the Commissioners have the ability to either accept the appeal and reverse the rates all the way back to where they were before, they have the ability to deny the appeal, which means the rates stay the same, or they have the ability to modify the rates based upon the same criteria that the Regional Wastewater District did. And so at the request of Commissioner Henry, I have put together a modification of the rates, so that the rates would be reduced by $5 a month to below $100 for the Rorton people, and to about $83 and some change for the DeSoto people.
And when would that take effect?
I think, believe it, it's for the residential users only, and it starts July 1, according to that document. The, the Regional Wastewater District has the ability to appeal that decision. They have 30 days of today's date, which to make, to the appeal. The next meeting of the Regional Wastewater District is July 11. I don't anticipate that they're going to make an appeal of that. They want to give relief as, as much as they can, but their hands are sort of tied, so this is, this is the avenue that can grant some, small relief, but some relief.
And that's the best we can do, it's the best we can do.
You need that in the motion, John?
Yes.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we reduce that rate, knowing that we are still gonna work on, hopefully, Muncie Sanitary District and try to get some of those charges decreased, so we could possibly decrease the rate more, would be my hopes.
Second that.
Have motion a second. Steve, can you call her, please?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, John, we have the response to the jail RFP.
Yes. You and I have looked at the RFP, and it meets all the criteria that we set out in the RFP. We only have one responder. It was advertised in several different publications and put out in at least two different trade journals, and we only had one response. So the recommendation is that the, the RFP would be approved, and the next step would be a public hearing, which was set for, is set for June 25, the week of today, at, I think at nine o'clock, if I remember right.
This room?
This room, yes. For public input on the RFP, which is now available for public review and inspection. And then after that meeting, after that public hearing, then the Commissioners would make a decision as to whether they want to accept the RFP or not. Then the process starts for the design and development. As the Commissioners know, this is a design-owned transfer-type arrangement, so the financing is determined and locked in, and there are no change orders, there are no changes, once we lock it in, once the Commissioners lock that in, then it's the set price. It's a way to control costs. And given the numbers in the RFP and some of the financing, it's still, it's still doable as James and I looked... It's a way to control cost. And given the numbers in the RFP and some of the financing, it's still, it's still doable, as James and I looked at. Still doable within the edit proposal that we've discussed in the past, so that there wouldn't be any increased taxes.
You need a motion?
So, you have a copy of that?
I'll make a motion. We approve that.
I'll second it. Steve, can you call her real please?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
No.
Mr. King?
Yes.
So, the next step is the public hearing on Monday, the 25th. The notice has been published.
Couldn't we hold that hearing somewhere else, like Heartland or, we can only see the, what, 80?
I don't know. I don't, I mean, I don't anticipate how many people come to these things, so. Most public hearings, nobody ever shows up, so.
This one might be a little different. That's my suggestion.
So, we'll move to amendment of claims in the amount of $5,94,523 a night sentence.
I'll move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Steve, can you call her real please?
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. Next, do we have any comments from the public?
Mike Jacobs, 2800 West Sequoia Court, Country Village. I'd like to thank the Commissioners on behalf, probably of a lot of folks in Rorton, DeSoto area, for the endless hard work and working in the people's best interest. I met Mr. Henry 19 months ago and he's a man of his word. He looks at all different solutions to the problem. And the research that has been done over the last 19 months, the leadership from Mr. Brooke, the best practices put in place, the cost savings of, you already heard, over, well over $100,000. It requires a lot of work. And these people are volunteers. Mr. Brooke is a volunteer on that board. Regional Wastewater Board, they, they get screamed at a lot. Nobody recognizes or realizes the hard work President Ray Maynard and his board and the committees that have been put together to work on a long-term solution. As I mentioned, in the people's best interest is well worth the wait. $5 might not sound like a whole lot, but it sure beats a poke in the eye. It's been a long time coming and greatly appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Ron Quickenbush. I live at 518 South Bridgewater in Yorktown. I didn't get up as an elected official, but I would like to have a copy of that RFP. I called the auditor the other day and he didn't have one available. I would also like to know if I could have a copy of the proposal for this consulting contract, see how much money that involves. The main reason I came up here today is, on this regional wastewater thing, I had some experience as a home builder when I was the president of the Muncy Home Builders Association. And we pooled funds at the time as builders and developers and sued the Muncy Sanitary District because they raised the tax fee more than they could prove cost. We hired Ralph Dennis and the local attorney and we prevailed and the city had to refund in excess of $60,000 in tax fees. I, I would recommend maybe, Mr. Brooke, maybe try to find that litigation and prove that the city of Muncy is astronomically overcharging these folks by, by law. And maybe you can get those rates reduced. We prevailed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Do you have anybody else?
Ron, I mean, John, I would like to ask if you could do one thing for our next meeting.
Sure.
Do a proclamation. Over the weekend, my boys from the hometown of Delville, within three years, won their second state championship. To recognize those young men.
I'd be happy to.
Next meeting. And I'll get with the superintendent, see if we can get some of the ballplayers up here that day.
It was hard, too.
Yes, it was.
I'll prepare a resolution for Commissioners for next meeting.
Thank you.
If we have nothing else, I entertain a motion to recess.
I'll move.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.